To the flying. United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call.
Uh.
Coming.
Party.
Ending that.
Okay, there, Derry.
There.
Tom Hilbert.
Here.
Lynn Paul.
Here.
Nora Cole.
Uh, excuse me.
John Stender.
Here.
Shalke.
Here.
Okay, uh, public meeting participation, not to worry about for that. We'll just ask the two gentlemen to sit down if we're, if they're getting too long, okay?
Did you bring the timer?
Yeah, I have it, yeah. That's John's job.
Okay.
Okay, adoption of agenda.
I make a motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Minutes, November twenty first.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November twenty first meeting.
All support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. I only got, I got page three on them, but that's okay.
It's on the back side.
But that's all right.
Is it?
I read it. Yeah, I just got.
It gets skipped, yeah.
We got three of three. I read it though, because I was interested, just to see how Michelle did, and she did really good.
Thanks. You should have watched it.
She did it. She did it.
Okay, public comment.
I heard one of the best.
There's Cory.
Since in six years. By Miss Dylan Paul. Brought it well, yeah, a little bit.
That's a good one.
I said. I'm sorry.
Sorry, there's Dad.
Huh?
What I thought.
Cory, do you know John Stender?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
He's our new member.
Yeah. Yep. Fantastic.
Yeah, so I was just gonna utilize public, uh, comment real quick.
Okay.
You look good.
Thank you.
Um, so before you, uh, after a good referral from, uh, Mr. Daring, uh, he pointed me in the direction of, uh, our newest member, uh, and John is here serving a three-year term. Um, I welcome him to this commission. He brings a skill set and I'll let him kind of, uh, maybe touch upon his own skill sets. He's worked in the gas and oil industry, uh, in terms of easements and has a, a wide range of knowledge from that standpoint, looking back, uh, towards municipalities and zoning. He also, uh, as he so eloquently put said, he kind of stepped over to the dark side, which is a darker green, uh, touching on wind and solar. Uh, so it's an amazing opportunity for this commission, especially given the considerations of the amendments, uh, before you, uh, in regards to solar, uh, to, to maybe let him and see what he brings to the table. Um, we've spoke momentarily before the meeting. Um, but I, I, I ask you to welcome him to this commission. I think we now will have a very well-rounded, uh, accompaniment. Uh, and so I thank you all for your service, uh, and as always, if there's anything that you need, um, just let me know. Um, simple as that. Uh, outside of that, I'm probably just gonna let the, you guys get some momentum and I'm beginning to back away, uh, because I have, uh, a three-year-old that made a date that I'm trying to honor. Um, but that being said, uh, with you and, and the public hearing is ordinance one fifty-two. Um, if you see anything in terms of the solar, please announce it and address it with, uh, this commission, John. Um, I think they'll all be open ear to, to, to your experiences. Uh, but you have, uh, I think you know just about everybody, correct? Uh, we have our building official, uh, Kevin Polly, uh, Lynn Doust, uh, administrative assistant, uh, that's helping with, uh, the, the recording and the planning commission. Michelle Woodruff, I almost said McCune.
It's okay.
I know, I love you.
Uh, she was cool too.
She was. Let's be honest. Um, but, uh, Tom Hilbert, Chair, uh, Mr. Stedton, and Larry Daring, uh, Dylan Polly, uh, the better half of the former that I had mentioned. Oh, you're not, well, hey, is that why you're always flirting with the ginger next to you? And, sorry, sorry code. So, I think, uh, this is, like I said, this is, we've, we've had a deficiency with, with a member, and I think, uh, we are now made whole, uh, and so I look forward. Um, so as always, if there's anything I can do, I can only do something if I know about it. So, never hesitate to reach out, um, if every, anybody needs my cellphone, look to the person to the left or right, they probably already have it. Share it. Um, I'll answer if I can. So, thank you very much.
If we need a, you know, a PA guy, we got one right here.
Right over there.
So, you know, there's.
You're here all night.
That's right.
I'm doing the chamber dinner again, so everyone has to come in February.
Correspondence, special event, intro into planning and zoning for renewable energy, that is January eleventh. And I got a reminder from Denise on that, and I don't know if anybody's interested, I, I'm kind of.
I am.
In Galer, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, if anybody needs rides, carpool, um, if there's consideration of, uh, numerous people from this commission that want to go, um, I would always ask, maybe carpool, if not, if, if you want, uh, I can actually rent a vehicle.
Party bus?
Yeah.
Where is where?
Me?
Yeah.
I'm going to consult my work schedule right now, just because of the hecticness of our life. Um, and if anything, I'm going to work in Sheboygan that day, so it'll be a faster commute for me, so.
Yep.
So, we're, um, we can just register for this and just, uh?
Yeah. County pay.
Nice work.
Yeah, I think this is free.
Oh, it's free, okay.
There's no. Yeah, so anybody can register if. Did everybody get that email?
Yes. I, I, so, I think Liam includes everybody in that stuff, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I already checked it out, I, I would like to go to, yeah.
So, what do we do to sign up, just?
This, you can register right through the.
You can scan it too, Larry, if you're. If your flip phone does that, if your flip phone does that, Larry, you can scan.
Well, I don't know, I'll charge it up. I've only got about ten minutes left.
Okay, well.
Oh, you got a burger. Yeah, we can figure out when there's carpooling, uh, or a friendly, you know, event, whatever it takes.
Sounds good. We'll be, uh, in contact with each other and, uh,
Yeah.
whoever's planning and going, we'll try to hook up. Ride together. Okay, anything else? Evan, you have anything for us? Not now, okay. All right, public hearing, zoning ordinance one fifty-two, zoning ordinance amendment to address aggrieved person childcare facilities, chickens, ducks, turkeys, ene fall, geese, solar energy, wireless facilities, wind, energy and building heights.
Um, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay.
All second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, all right.
So, I tried to reduce the population of turkeys on the home road. Okay, he had a last second break, he juke me, but at his number. Um, but yeah, so this, that will be falling into that same amendment, is how, how do we look at, uh, especially in the animal instances, uh, because zoning doesn't really have like to have people doing something and then get approved. Um, so, that's why I asked to have some flexibility in all the water front and all you want, is because every, every case is a little different, and when I, I have to honor our zoning, but actually depending on the si- situation, I, every case is a little different, um, to some extent, so how do you find the best adherence? Long sugar. Um, animals are everything under themselves, their first couple of bullies. Um, once you have it, it's harder to. Um, so, turkeys, I saw them for the first time.
You stopped in Talkville?
Did it hurt?
Yeah.
I would have, I would have.
All eight of them.
That's right.
All eight of them.
If you would have stayed on the tar back. Pardon. Pardon, right, and that was a ditch I was not bound to cross at seventy miles, sixty miles an hour.
Forty-five.
Fifty-five.
Thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
So, anything else on, uh? I guess that, well, that's on page three, is there?
Like, I guess you say, you just made it, I'm sorry, Tom.
Les always said, uh, no roosters and then, uh, usually no problems, but.
The first crow is the first go.
Yeah.
Usually, how it should be.
Okay, so that was my question is, I mean, people think that they're saving the world by getting a chicken or a turkey and raising it for, you know, their kids four age or Thanksgiving next year and having fun as a family. What happens when you're not adhering? Is it a fine, is it? I mean, do you go out there with your Jeep?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I.
You just pay a visit?
I pay a visit.
Okay.
I usually try, if I can't make personal contact, then I ha- I'll sit down and draft a letter of ordinance infringement Sunday, in, in hopefully prompting communication. As, that is fifty percent is creating avenues of communication. Um, and really oftentimes in this regard, uh, I think I was the only county supervisor in the state of Michigan to beat an M-DAR case two years ago, and that was on closely um, Michigan Department of Agricultural and Rural Development. Um, we had a scenario where, yeah, I, I, uh, actually that, that individual was a, I think she was the leader of four age, um, R one district, actually, sorry, R two district, on grid on twenty-three, opposite of Long Lake. Um, they had three goats, uh, five pigs, forty chickens, twenty rabbits, on less than a acre of land. Um,
Hmm.
And M-DAR, I fought with them for a year, uh, and actually won the case, uh, and that's why now, when you look at goat ordinance one forty-two, when you get into section three oh nine, which is chicken sex, now it's turkeys, cavals, et cetera. Um, is an embedded link of what a gamp centers. And that is how M-DAR determines in their classifications for what's allowable by land mass, they have different ratio. Um, and so now it's embedded, because we basically stipulated within ordinance one forty-two, unless you hit that criteria, your, your gamp was certain. Um, so it strengthens the targets to this.
Okay.
Um, lessons learned after an R-BUS. I mean, I actually, in that instance, I used DHHS to leverage against M-DAR, uh, because unfortunately, uh, this instructor, um, brought in a sick goat, uh, for her daughter to nurse in her bedroom, died, and then shortly thereafter, her daughter got a mysterious illness. Um, and so I had to use, eh, eh, you use whatever resources available to get to a, a conclusion. Um, uh, they were denied having animals at that location shortly thereafter, and that was, I think, the, in the state, one of the first successful municipal, uh, uh, debates and or flights to determine, uh, animal allowance in a non-agricultural area. So, it was dreadful.
So, there's not even a special use permit on, outside of the?
Water front and R one?
Yes, there's no special, there is a special use?
For those two.
For those two only?
Just for those two, no matter what. Roosters are ugly.
They're prohibited.
Allowed for.
Yeah, no, that's.
The only thing, the only district that a, a rooster is allowable is agricultural, so.
Mm-hmm.
Crazy. Um, and I think most of those farmers don't really care for roosters, right? Because what is it? Either meat early or annoying late.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, yeah, uh, and then having that afforded flexibility is high, you know, it's like building. Sometimes there's cases that, and, and this zoning word, it's a living document. You don't know where your deficiencies really lie in it until you actually come across a case that shows you where your deficiencies lie. Um, that's why this is impactful, timing, uh, with the addition to, uh, the solar array, uh, discussions, because we now, for the first time, outside of this independent residential view, have people looking at solar in this different. Um, it's quote-unquote more, uh, reliable than the wooden cabins in this thing. Um, but that being said, I mean, for you, that's right, now can be a great production. Um, so, it's kind of a, to give some flexibility, and actually, when Denise comes back, I, I would admit, it's coming up into this next year, really starting through this winter, because this is usually the slower time for this commission, is we're gonna start working proactively on our zoning ordinance amendment, as I continue, uh, our master plan, which is gonna have a whole additional chapter added to it, which we won't have to recreate the wheel, but evolved into coastal resilience uh, and, uh, environmental factors, that I think we have to give consideration of. Um, and then we're also concurrently going to be doing, uh, our rectum. Uh, so, we're coming up into a big year. Um, and so I'm trying to break that huge overwhelming sense, so those are two massive projects to do. We just provided eight amendments now, we'll take away at the amendments and really start talking about what is the, the future of the charter township of Elpina, if I'm around the territory. Uh, I mean, we can all recognize the fact that the days of industry, uh, are, are extremely waning, if not almost nearly extinct. Um, but manufacturing is the new, and we had to reassert, obviously, you saw that over the past two years. Okay, uh, repurposing buildings, uh, job creation, living wage job creation. Um, we now have, I believe, a hundred and sixty-two jobs of former game art building. Um, uh, and a tax pullout. Um, so these are good things, we have manufacturing, that's it, that's our, I, I believe, uh, our, our skill set as a region is manufacturing. Um, but outside of that, that's not gonna really, unless we find a corporation that needs higher volume of skillset laborers, it's kind of the ebb and flow of what the market is. Uh, what is our economic drivers? I personally see our economic drivers are sustainable tourism. Our natural resource really are, if you look at, let's look at the west side, you want, you want a lesson. What is, what are we looking for? And that's gonna be part of what I'm gonna ask you as we start that master plan process. What is Elpina known for and what do we want to? Um, because, yeah, La Barge is La Barge, and that's fine, they have another three hundred years of production that quarter. Uh, Elmers has seventy-five, although they've been buying every hunting camp to the north and to their, uh, uh, Elpina Agribank has expanded their sales. Um, so, every limestone quarry within an eight-mile radius of where we stand and sit here this evening has over a hun- roughly a hundred years of resource extraction available to them. So, those are gonna, so, those are gonna make. But outside of that, I mean, I look at it this way, this past year, we had nine stops of a cruise ship. They have twenty-four on the dock for this upcoming. That is one is, we have other small businesses, another good thing that's popping up is electric scooters, electric five, are actually starting to recreate, even the people that live here, especially, that was one thing that stemmed out of COVID, this gotta go for a while, I'm gonna, I don't want to be around somebody. Beautiful. This, this county has plenty of square miles and doing the hundred and forty-four square of this country, uh, really do what they want, but we have IC, and, and please, uh, it's not just me. Uh, I'm not my, my predecessor, this isn't Charter Township or State. This is, what are your thoughts? To me, I see our sustainable economic drivers being focused around our natural resource. That's just me, and I'm, we're starting to see it right now, I just mentioned, nine cruise ships, five hundred new foreign people to our shore, is gonna go five hundred people plus four hundred staff, twenty-four times. That's what we're growing at, three times rate. So, is that the B-L-S-A-L, what are the niches? How should we look at our, our master, where are our deficiencies? What is our, that's really what that, that book is about. What is our drive, what is our mission as a township? To me, I will come up with anything else that can really take the place of our natural resources as a focus, because if you look at, as I formerly mentioned, every man or every major corporation that is here has, has sustained is because of our natural resource. So, there's an inherent tie. And so, what does it look? To me, I, I say, we need to predict as much of what makes our community special. The things that make it special are the things that we never talked about, except for this thing called internet came along and started to ruin our, our grade, because people are actually making their way, an hour and a half out of their way. That's the, the running joke for all of our life. You show up in Elpina and you're gonna have a plant, you're either lost or you're drunk, because you have to really step out of your comfort zone to get here. They're coming, they're coming here because our land is cheap. And if we don't start looking at that and anticipating, I've seen more volume of Ohio, Chicago and New York money buying properties this past fiscal than ever before. Even the west side of the state, we can look at our current city manager and our now, uh, county administrator. They, they made all that advantage because they could sell their, their, their homes on the west side. Add X, come here to a comparable home and only spend a quarter of the month. What do we want to? And how do we want to get there? So, everybody's opinion is great. I'm not, I'm just one of them. Um, so I looked at, that'll be a process, but that's how I wanna frame, is what is special? And if it's that special, then this commission is commissioned, but not included, because that's our next ten, twenty years. So, where's mine for you?
And the Lake Huron pledge, which we were, just had a.
Yep.
Should be.
Yep, and so I can kind of recap that, so, uh, Tom, uh, and I were a part of the, uh, last, uh, Lake Huron Forever, uh, pledge, which came before this commission. Um, I personally invited the city. Because I don't know if you know me well enough yet, I don't care for the invisible and visible, um, it's already. Um, so, what we're gonna be doing, uh, I already have a, a date, sit down with, uh, Rachel and, uh, Mary Chapman from the county and city. Um, all three entities are gonna do the Lake Huron Forever pledge. Or as, as a show. Um, so.
All this other?
And so. But if you have any questions, because we are coming up with some, some big projects, and I bet they can be fun. And it's fun, because what do we want our community? If, and everybody has a different background. What are from, you know, from Michelle to Cory, what are the things you love about us? What do you want to see maintained? What do you want to see changed? And we can kind of create that rough draft of everybody's independent list, and when we really get into it, say, this is my list, and we'll do a whiteboard exercise. This is what we want to stay. This is what needs to be changed, and that's been dead for ten years. So, how, how do we stay ahead of the curve? Because right now, the city's going through their zoning ordinance, uh, amendments, and, uh, revisiting the entire amendment or ordinance. You know what they're using for a roadmap? Charter Township of Elpina.
Really?
Um, because we're, even as he stands on page, that more progressive and that more thoughtful in the perspective. Um, so when they get to a parallel with us, that's up. We're just gonna blow their doors off again, because we so, I mean, I love them, I grew up downtown, but they can only go up. That's, that's the blessing and the curse of us as municipalities. We are, we are the donor, they are the whore. Um, so I said, I, running joke, I said, you build a parking garage and I'll, I'll be your zoning player. Um, although they hired my buddy, my best buddy, yeah. Um, so, we have a lot of potential. Um, we have, obviously, uh, a hundred room hotel still coming here. Um, we have Marshall, that's, I think, fairly, for as late as they start them, they, they're coming along.
I saw you there the other day, I wondered if you were gonna grab a shovel.
Never afraid. Shovel. Depending on what part of the day it was, so.
A question that I have, and it's just because of this conversation, but when are we gonna, when are we gonna focus on something other than thirty-two, or is that up to the developers?
Always up to the developer, that's a common, and I, I, I applaud you for bringing it, because, you know, um, the keyboard warrior say, put the onus back on municipalities, like it's my God-given right, and say, oh, hey, A, B, C, whatever company, thank you, I want you in my community. This is where you're going. So, I've been trying to drive that, but all, and the funny thing is, and people don't really understand, is we've actually had more commercial redevelopment or new development, twenty-three cell, than we've had on thirty-two west.
I believe it, it's just, it's, no, but it's the, it's the fault, it's the downfall now of
Yeah.
twenty-three cell. It's the vacant buildings, it's the trashy buildings, you know?
Downfall of all, or outside, so.
But who markets it, I guess, is more the, is that Mahler? Do we, as a, as a Charter Township of Elpina, do you market the availability?
I, I do not, because I would be basically doing my stuff.
Okay.
So, where do I start?
Right, no, 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 it's, it's just a question.
I did offer to pay for stuff, but.
You don't have time for that.
I get you. So, I wish I could say, you know what? Here's an incentive base for you to explore this, uh, I am driving one, uh, developer cell. And I'm hoping that it comes to fruition, uh, because it would be another, well, what was it, tax pull, the Valley of the Hampton, eight, seven or eight? Um, that equal to that, if not greater. Um, can't really speak about it right now, because I just put the parties that needed the assistance in the same, that's how I, because it's very touchy-wash as a supervisor or elected official, because obviously, two more, two more weeks, if people know that, they're not only the skippy, blah, 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 but skippies driving me. I just, I do make. That's it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I do try to drive, uh, uh, developers. Um, that's why Mike told me, I invited him to the planning commission meeting when, uh, this commission approved the, the plan for the Hampton. And Mahler asked, why am I even here? I said, you're the director of Target. You need to be, he's like, you did everything, but I don't care. You're the good director of Target.
Well, then he should look to you for inspiration, then, I, I, I mean, and not that he doesn't have enough balls in the air, I'm not saying
Yeah.
he's sitting on his stuff, not, not marketing our town, he's got, he's got a big area too, but.
And, and the biggest, I think, right now, I, I'm happy with any book that we're seeing in the past few years, they're dealing with square footage cost and material expense. Uh, you're extending an ROI.
Yeah.
Need it, depending on your financing, you need it ten years. Uh, you, you go over five. Uh, you, you go over five. People are like, I know, I mean, cause they, they want what they put in, you know, the shortest of my time. Um, no, long and short, I can't say. Now, can I, have I started to look into incentives? Whether it's, uh, through PIFs or any other brownfield related activities? Um, to drive potential developers north or south? I will do everything in my power. Um, obviously being raised and grown outside. I see it, um, and I understand people's unfortunate misconception that it's a municipality's drive that pushes them towards the thirty-two corridor. Um, cause I actually, I'm, I'm, I pulled up a fact book one day and I'm like. And they're complaining, we don't need a Hampton. We need, why is everybody on thirty-two? Well, you look at any other community and you look at the corporate drivers. One, they've done so many overlapping GIS maps to say traffic count's only one variable, because if you only look at traffic counts, twenty-three south, thirty-two west, and twenty-three north are almost identical. So you can't use that as a driver to deter or hold. But what you unfortunately, when you start putting box stores and big names in a general area, every other player wants to be as close to those players because one, now your consumers can overlap. And the travel distance is as short as possible.
Well, no one's gonna say, let's go to Alpena and stop on the south end and go to TJ Maxx and then drive all the way over to the other part. And I put all the way over in quotes because everyone thinks it's so far. It's, I mean, it's, it's eight minutes maybe, but yeah, let's go all the way over to Blommer. I know, I, I see from the commerce side of it, from the business owner, from the developer side of it. My question merely was, who's marketing that? Because the last thing, I think, not the last thing we need, I shouldn't say that, I'll, I'll restate it, but we have a lot of storage facilities in buildings that used to be commerce. And it's kind of, a kind of a bummer. That, no, I mean, so that's, I guess, where.
That's that free option, so I don't know to what extent that would be a good question, uh, for Mr. Mahler. How can he approach it that way? Basically, by the time somebody calls me, I actually, in the instance of the Hampton, that began because I did not want a million dollar grant that we got for a brownfield project to die. So I started calling anybody that had the need. Uh, and once took, or took, and I said, okay, and I put him in a room with APS. Said, here's the board, here's your contact, uh, Mr. Ravinal. Commence, because like I said, it's a very tricky scenario for an elected official to make that introduction. Walk away and then say, call me when you have questions. It worked in this instance, but unfortunately not in the right location. Um, because they're in, the ROI was so upside down, especially given the building cost, to try to build a bus garage on a secondary sub. Wasn't in the cards, but they aren't even new. I mean, they have corporations. I have a good friend that I went to state that, that's what he does, GIS over. Um, you know, my political side. That, these are the intersections and areas. So you go to this part, you've been working with Home Depot now with, uh, Tesla and the other electric car companies, you know, they're better than Tesla. Um, but anyways, they know, they've already looked at our community. So they look at everything they've diagnosed as top to bottom, left, right, and say, okay, what other affiliates are that we wanna be close? And that's where that corporatization really comes into play. They already have an idea. That's where they want. As a municipality or as an economic driver, how can we incentivize any new developers? Um, been working, we do, we have a big player down on twenty-three south. Uh, they're still, they're slow on their business model, uh, but F and D trade. On the old constant sales and service, that's.
And they have a sign up.
Hopefully, do they finally give it up?
Yeah, it looks nice.
Um.
And they're on life below zero on a regular basis. If you guys didn't know that.
So I'm, I'm, I'm trying. But then there's the, yeah, the oldest, the twenty-three south, those business owners.
Yeah, it's great for Bob Young. Bob Young's got very convenient space, space store stuff, which he needs. And I, great respect for him.
Same.
However.
Except for for the betterment of our community, is that the best square footage?
Correct, correct.
Are together.
Yeah. So I guess that's just my, my concern is to, uh, cause I get it too. I get the questions too. And it's, I, no one really even knows them on this commission. It's got nothing to do with this commission, but just being who I am is what's, why is everything going to thirty-two? Why is everything going to thirty-two? And I, I know, I mean, it's just like, that's why all the good foods on the outside of the, of the grocery store. You know, you gotta go all the way around a grocery store to get what you need so that you walk through the middle parts. It's, it's simple marketing.
That's a good.
But we've got a market that we're more than just a storage facility because I have people that come from the south on a regular basis. And there's not even working lights, like streetlights, so it's, it looks desolate as you're approaching, so. I'll, I'll write down the streets. I'll write them down on my way home tonight because there was one the other night. I was, Ryan almost hit somebody because they were not intelligent enough to wait for traffic, but right there at Bear Point. Fitzpatrick's, yeah, that, that street light, both of them on the overhang, they were out. He almost peeled a family of three.
So and then with, and I, I, I get this to all members of this commission, uh, if you see any streetlights out in this township, please let me know where they're at. Uh, we actually have a partnership, uh, and relationship with Alpena Power Company who maintains all streetlights on our lands. Um, so I don't know what's up.
I'll let you know.
But yeah, I, so I take all.
I called my sister. She told me it wasn't her job.
Like at sixty-five and Long Rapids Road.
Um, not only was it replaced, when I was out there last week, it was so bright. I nearly threw a rock at it. It's that LED bright, yeah.
Well, that was tiny.
Oh, well, yeah, that's.
I was doing pulling up the dots for. And some, I pulled up, it's like, you're a supervisor, like. What do you do, folks? Grab my phone? Hey, Alpena Bar, is this, uh, your light? Nope, hi, Jay.
Perfect, yeah, it's bright.
Yeah, I saw the bell hollering up there.
Yeah.
They can actually do that now.
I was gonna say, maybe I'll have my dad know. I'll have my dad make a call.
Yeah, so, no. However, I can help economic development, I love it. I really do love it. Uh, I love zoning, so I'm an odd duck, right? Um, but that's how we drive and that's the zoning ordinance and the master plan. You, you wanna look and drive people outside of the thirty-two corridor. You actually have some abilities, creative building aid. We can actually.
Well, we're about out of space. It's this close. Thirty-two, I know they'll find room.
And that relates to another question, it's infrastructure. I don't wanna be travestied. I don't wanna be gay. They grew up overnight and God bless them, except for they don't have the wherewithal to do these processes. To say, we need some infrastructure expansion that makes sense. You can't drive in Travis City, even in the off scene, and have it make sense. Their infrastructure's horrible. Gaylord is very much a tank. Um, they kind of grew at the same time concurrent. What is our road business? But what other infrastructure do we need in place? Um, I've already started the conversations of re-aiming the talks of, uh, I guess. Uh, our track study is knocking on, uh, twenty years out of date. Uh, considerable, maybe that's a problem with stretch, just by ten years out of date, if not more. Um, but part of those conversations were the anticipated growth of the thirty-two corridor. And how to maintain consistent traffic. And they had proposed, uh, crossing, uh, Lake Winnia across the river, along Rapids. Silver Creek, off along Rapids, all the way up to French. Uh, but one that has some there. Uh, this twenty twenty-two is near the kid for me. If for the kids, I'm all in, man. Um. The junior high should have never been put in on a one-way and one-way L Street. They did so because they thought they had the ability to turn around and annex it to the city. Of which that failed. Township attorney, actually, now our, our water litigation attorney successfully stopped that annexation from happening. That's the first time that the township actually stopped an annexation ever. You see, look at our Gary Man's lines. Um, I thought I knew all of them. I learned a new one about a month or two ago, uh, and that's on Bagley. Uh, from Bagley Street Bridge, uh, northbound. City's on the right, we're on the left, minus the fact that the city annexed. County Road Commission Building and the front facing lot off of.
Our folder.
Um, they annexed those two parcels. But what I found out, which was quite interesting, a hundred and fifty-year-old document that the Fletcher family gave two hundred feet. So if you actually look, and now that you're, you ever travel it from, you know, from work, Hop on Hops, you don't have to pay the whole way. But Hobbs coming up to, uh, Third Street, Third Street Hobbs, actually, when you start getting there, it starts going off the section line a little bit. Because there's a unique jog between, uh, thirty-two and Long Rapids that jumps over to the west, it would be. So technically after the river northbound on Bagley, I'll wish six years as a supervisor to believe that. That's the city. Found out that after the river, we actually have a hundred and ten feet. That, that whole shoulder all the way into Island Drive subdivision. Those power poles in that division, that's a reversible boundary. So when you're at the intersections of like, uh, Bagley coming into Long Rapids, you always have at the intersection is how they defeat the section line. So from Walgreens, when you're heading northbound on Bagley, you actually diverting to the left a little bit. And then you're actually coming back and then jogging when you're getting up onto Gento. It's a weird though. So that they defeated the section, because that Bagley was always principally on the second. So, random fast, more in the west, you know? But I wish I could incentivize, but maybe that's a no lose conversation, but Denise says we're going through it. How can we incentivize businesses? Can we proactively set up, uh, a tentage? In all of twenty-three south, how, how do we propagate businesses? Um, I'm open to any and all creative play. Because I wanna have sustainable, that's the only key. I don't want clashing with Anne, you know? Um, what is a sustainable? And, and right now, the markets are so weird. Really, I wanna say the market's construction, but they're starting to normalize a little bit. But now the Fed jacking up, uh, interest rate.
Can't afford.
You can't afford.
It's not material. It's the money that costs the money.
The money's costing more than the ink that they put on those rag bills on the first one. Um, so. Fun stuff. I will, on that, if there's any other questions, I'll answer. Good conversation. If you see anything and wanna mention on special on the solar, uh, any good skills out there?
And we don't define GAMP, generally accepted agricultural management practices. Yeah, it's not defined in there.
In ordinance one forty-two?
I don't, I don't think so.
It may not, so maybe, put a, put a post in. Now, that being said, are there any materials that anybody's deficient? Are there any office supplies to perform the functions of planning commissioner? That you need? I mean, you don't need to be buying things out of pocket, so. You need some equipment, material, whatever cases, let us know. However, we can help you be the best commissioner. That part of my job. And so I'm ha, I'm happy. We have a wonderful zoning board of appeals. We are, we just actually committed, uh, the last cycle of, uh, well, actually, yeah, March board. In this fiscal, we just had board review. Um, wonderful, uh, board numbers on that, so. I think we have a very well, uh, complimentary, uh, uh, commission and boards, but every, everyone gets a little bit, so just let me know how I can do this. Yeah, I'm gonna go try some awesome guy with, I have a good guy.
Yeah, let's make this fast.
Yeah, so.
Thanks, Nathan.
So do we have, we don't have two readings of this or anything? Give me or how do we?
Do we just have to adapt?
You're gonna know, you're gonna take a recommendation for board trustees to adopt it.
Okay.
Once we told the public, the public period.
Did you also have that, on the school, the first reading, second reading adoption, but we don't.
No. You don't have to get introduced. The board trustees who kind of actually adopted.
That's not a motion. John, were you able to review this? Just your expertise, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Your expertise in that area, I think, would be beneficial.
On the solar?
Yeah.
And wind, I didn't get to the wind, but I did the solar. And the solar, the, the one thing I brought up, or I was talking with Nathan with before I even, we sat down and saw on page nine of eighteen, that, that I brought, or I thought. Um. Uh, thirteen B of that, siding of panels to avoid disturbance and compaction of farmland by siding panel along the field edge and in non-production areas to maximize the extent practicable and financially feasible. Um, to me, coming from that industry, you just shot me down completely. Let's say you got forty acres, okay? Um, if I own a forty acre tract and it's agricultural, you want me to put all my solar panels around the outside edge where the fencing is? Uh, that's not, uh, it, it just won't be feasible for that landowner to sign a lease with the company to do it. Nor would it be for the company to even perceive that or try to do that. Because, I mean, they use, they need as much act land as they can to do it. Um, first of all, there's setbacks. I didn't even look, I did look at them and I forgot how much the setbacks are inside the boundaries of the, the solar park. Um, usually they're a hundred and five hundred feet, just depends on where you are and what that, what it's about in, in my experience. So if, let's just say it's a, let's say it's a two hundred acre parcel land and we're gonna cover it with solar panels. But now the ordinance says that you've gotta put it along the outside edge. But we got a hundred foot setback, so where do I put my solar panels now?
Right.
Because you just pushed me into a hundred foot or a hundred fifty or whatever. Um, and I do believe there is a setback from neighboring parcels of a hundred foot, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Or maybe neighboring non-participating parcel.
Stop reading.
I get, I get the point of trying to minimize agricultural land or solar development because of agriculture. We're gonna keep agriculture. We don't have that much agricultural in the township. I don't know how much there is, but maybe somebody else does. But you, a, a solar, a, a commercial grade solar facility or utility scale solar, solar facility is usually gonna be in the range of eight hundred to two thousand acres is what they need. Now, not all right together, but contiguous enough that you've gotta be able to put the pieces together, put the pieces of the puzzle together to move the electricity to the T-line, the transmission line, wherever that is, and get the power out. So, um, there, the solar facilities in the area would be located along those T-lines where they are. Um, we've got one. Um, we've got one running north and south on the east side of twenty three, if I'm not mistaken. We've got one on thirty two headed west all the way to Atlanta. Uh, it's from the airport on the north side, jumps over the south side and goes. Uh, and there's one running south um down through Sanborn Township in that area. Big lots is what I'm gonna have, or I'm thinking.
Okay.
So, those are the areas where that development's gonna be more likely. So. I haven't sat down and looked at the township to see where our T lines are here. I know where solar projects are going and they're being proposed, but it's not Alpena. I haven't heard of anything in Alpena Township other than what. Steve said that they were approached as, or he was approached on what a hundred acre parcel or something. I don't know what it was. And uh. My question, where were they? He said there's no power there. What are they gonna do with power? Truck it. You gotta.
Solar. Yeah.
So you have to have somewhere to sell it. And the further away you get, the more economically unviable it comes, it become. So transporting that electricity more than. Three miles is just makes a whole project unfeasible.
Hmm.
Uh, so. You you you'll see big solar developments in the bigger agricultural areas. Quite frankly, uh, Grasset, Isabella, the thumb. And just the big open fields and everything, they're down in there.
When you're talking Wellington, Wilson or Green.
Yeah, but even there, even in in Green and and Wilson and that, it's fine. There there's. That agricultural is there, but there's. You if you look at an overlay of of where the forested areas are, it's like pieced piecemeal where the agricultural is around it, you know? So.
Which then wouldn't be feasible for a developer.
Both developers in in solar and and uh wind, you're gonna find our our, you put trees up, they're gone. If there's trees there, especially when they just do not cut down trees to to put in a wind farm. But even though it's a hundred and fifty feet above, they still don't do it. So.
Right.
Uh, the economic impact of of trying to, first of all, the physicality or or whatever you want to call structural. Trying to get the turbine to it.
Okay. That's just that. It's just that straightforward.
Um, also the trees create a wind disturbance.
Hmm.
So.
And I can imagine the habitats.
Oh habitat, yeah.
I mean, that would be huge.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, not in Alpena Township. You can't have a bird, but. You can't have a rooster, chicken, duck.
So that was my my question for that. Uh, I said, I I understand and I get it for everything else. Minimize that impact to the ground by screwing the indoor piling or whatever. Um, I haven't seen a solar farm yet where. They do much more than drive up. Um, what do you call it? ID more or less into the ground? The amount of money, but now nowadays. So. That was the one, that was the one big question I had or big issue I had was was that. In that by doing that, by siding those panels to avoid disturbance on those outside edges, along field edges or. Not productive area. I see what they're trying to do is keep agricultural agriculture. Now I go back to the other side of me that says that's also a. Um, a property use issue or an ownership issue. If that farmer decides they want to lease this land for solar and the solar company can. Do it within the regulations of the township, county, whatever. Then they should do that. It's, is it up to us to say you can only fund that? That's what I'm gonna get it. Is it up to the township to say that? I don't know. I don't know.
Okay. But then we could, they could, they could apply to get that rezoned.
Oh, yeah.
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 So there's ways around it, but would, I mean, from a developer standpoint, you can, you don't have to speak to us, but would even seeing this dissuade.
Seeing that, seeing that in there with with uh the the current companies that I work for, four of them, they would all run.
Okay.
Not run, they just wouldn't spend.
Pursue it.
Effort.
It's not worth it to them to get it rezoned or or specially used.
Too many areas to work with that we don't have to worry about that. So.
Okay.
But then again, the other side of it is, we already know what your ordinance is. And and we've talked to you, and then we've done that, I've done that. Where we've gone into a township and we know what their ordinance is and what it says and everything. So we sit down and talk with the township board about what we want to do first. With confidentiality agreements and everything. And then come back and and uh start the leasing or whatever. It's almost a cart before the horse type of thing.
Mm hmm.
Every township's different, every county's different, every municipality's different.
Okay.
Not like oil and gas, so. Which is state level. Um, other than that, I really didn't have any other. I did not get into the wind um part of it. Um, because the solar takes up so much. So.
Is this, was this brought to us by Denise?
Yeah. Yeah, she, this is the one that he had, the issue of the revisions, but from the last.
Mm hmm.
This is what she presented.
Yeah, from her conference and. But, yeah.
So I guess the question would be, uh, do we want to incentivize solar to come to this area or do we want to keep it? You know, like right now, they have a structure to scare solar away. Do we want that? Like, how beneficial, how much money?
Yeah, that's the other end of it. It, you know, the the money that would come in, there's there is tax money.
Uh huh.
That is on these industrial facilities. That that's lucrative for the township and can be, let alone the land. So, um, but do we have enough acreage in this township that it would warrant us? Wanting to do anything by that, or do we have areas that we could send them to and say, just like. M thirty two west and next to Michelle's house.
I'll take it. Bless is my electric bill.
Yeah. Everybody thinks it does.
Or like looking into the future, though, you know, if a lot of other counties get on board with solar. And farmland becomes more scarce, you know, uh, do you actually make more money having farmland than solar, you know, like?
Yeah.
Well, and remember, it's a solar farm.
Mm hmm.
You know?
You're farming sun, like it's a wave.
Mm hmm.
That's nice. Sales pitch more than a gal, but.
Video gaming is an Olympic sport now. So I mean, like, times they are changing. How much do we want to hold on to the old thought? There's not a lot, I, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong. There's not a whole lot of new uh. Um, dairy farms and crop farms all popping up all over the place. It's not the new industry.
Bought up.
They're being bought up by these kind of peoples or bigger farms.
Maybe not necessarily this, but that much, but yeah. There is an awful lot of solar going on in the state. I mean, a lot of stuff going on. Um, so do we, do we go? Northern Michigan, I've not seen that.
I'm wondering if we should, you know, the the building code, everything else about this one forty two that I read, I felt like it was just. Um, a lot of it was semantics and just clarity as childcare I was comfortable with. Um, the building, I asked a guy. He kind of said, yeah, it seems right. Um, not this guy, but the this guy, he's old, he's retired.
Oh.
Um, but. Yeah.
No, define old.
Yeah, well, forty seven. He's just retired. We'll put it that way.
You need to move on.
Um, but he said it made sense, you know, I just asked some questions, but when it came to this solar and wind, I'm grateful, not just because of who you are. But I'm grateful that your expertise is it's brought to us now on this commission because.
I hope.
I, all I kept saying, kept saying to myself was, this is just a lot of repetitive.
Yeah.
Language, but I don't know, I mean, I don't know what a sitting panel is in my head.
It's actually siding.
Siding?
Siding.
Okay, well, I looked at it as sitting and I was like, oh.
It's not walking.
But or it's, you can sit next to it.
Yeah. Siding a panel, you're you're saying that, okay, I'm gonna put panels here.
Got it.
I'm siding them there.
Site, like a site plan, site.
I've got a question on page three. And it's just, I get, I get too wrapped up in the. Um, little bitty things of things, and I talked to Larry about this one time too. But, um, at the end of the of C, the paragraph right there where it says special land use. And permit is crossed off. Shouldn't be crossed off?
It would just eliminating the.
But you're issuing a special land use permit. So if you read the sentence. Um, shall be considered as a permitted use of zoning administrator approval in the R two and R three districts and. A special land use in the R one twelve. Yeah, I get it. Okay, I see it.
Mm hmm.
Now that I read.
That would, yeah, it redundant, it gets redundant.
And then I I also, and I mentioned to Larry, they, you, in this instance. They always talk about lots, participating lots. When I think of a lot, I think of word. For例, it's a lot. Um, not an eighty acre tract of land is a lot. I I. In my world, we would call that a parcel.
Parcel.
Yeah, but I'm not gonna change everything. I just gotta get used to the way. Y'all say it for me. Yeah.
But wait, I'm on your side there, John.
I agree.
Parcel and lot need to be defined differently, I would think.
I just, I would like to see the definition of it in the in the.
Is it in the, is it in the ordinance?
In. But I.
Tom's got it here.
Really? Yeah, I meant the text. What do you think? Does it give you one? Yeah.
No, we didn't define parcel.
We didn't define parcel?
Neither, I'm probably not.
Cause I'm thinking city lot versus like you said, an eighty acre parcel.
It's like. You know, I can't, when you're, when you're combining lots. Um. If I bought a forty acre tract next to Larry with his forty that I bought from Larry already. And I have two forty acre parcels next to each other.
A lot is parcel of land occupied or which could be occupied by a main building or a group of such buildings. And accessory buildings or utilized for principal use and uses accessory there to. Together with such open spaces as required under the provisions of this ordinance. A lot may or may not be specifically designated as such on public records. So whatever, whatever you get.
Yeah.
So we do everything by lots.
Yeah.
So we we've got, but not by parcels.
Okay.
So forget everything you learned in ag class. Feed it into us.
Well, and I guess, um. But I kind of agree with John on. The size would differentiate. Something. You know what I'm saying?
That's a lot, not a parcel.
Right.
Yeah, I look at a parcel of the tax ID number parcel. That's a parcel of land. You know, individual parcel of land, individual lots or lot one, block two, that sort of thing, or or whatever. That's, but but that's my world. That's forty seven years of title experience.
Mm hmm.
See, we're not looking at it, we're looking at a parcel of land occupied.
Yeah, or which could be occupied.
Mm hmm.
So. No.
I understand, yeah, I understand a lot, because we think like a, in a subdivision.
Yes, yes.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. So, but now if you go change that, are you, are you reinventing the wheel of changing?
I don't know, you have to, you know.
Read the whole ordinance and see how it's, how it's referred elsewhere. So, you have until January night?
You've given me homework with that.
No, I'm saying.
It certainly means that much, you know.
We'll change your way of thinking. Yeah.
You have to understand that a lot could be parcel.
Yeah, or a lot.
Or a parcel could be a lot.
It is, yeah.
So should we, should we hold off making a recommendation to send this to the board until we were, are able to meet with Denise and get clarity? What do you guys think?
I just, I would like to know why, why they.
What's the justification for that?
Thirteen B meant, and I I, I don't know where this came from, where the. The changes or recommended changes came from, I think, that's my question.
So Denise Klein is our representative from Nemco?
Yeah.
Okay, and um, last month, she was making some amendments to, like updating. The the one forty two, and there was a couple other ones too that she was. Um, kind of building off of from some recent education that she had, and then also in response to making sure that we go to this. Um, this event in Gaylord to learn more about it ourselves.
Yeah.
And when I look at that date versus our next meeting date, this event takes place after.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I don't know if we could get Denise maybe at the January meeting that Monday. To explain a little bit more of it, or if we want to wait to get our own education for those of us that can attend. To make sure that we're reading what we think we're reading by way of this. This zoning training, I mean.
Yeah.
It's an introductory to planning and zoning for renewable energy and a good chunk of this conversation. I know I need more education on.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can table, we can table this.
We could table it?
Yeah, yes, we can do whatever we want. You know, I don't think so, uh, somebody's not waiting, uh, uh, to, you know.
To get a permit.
Solar farm uh, uh, this month.
I don't think January and February, a big solar panel farming month.
They wanted to make sure.
If we had somebody knocking on our door, I would, I would call Denise right now, but. I think that we just maybe need to get it on her radar for January and.
But John doesn't think there's anybody uh, uh, gonna develop a. Thousand acre solar firm in Alpena Township in the next month.
No, oh god. Five years, I don't even think that, but.
But we have to have it right, so that.
We want to be.
We want to be, have it right, because we don't want to get caught with our pants down and then get a bunch of special use permits that.
Yeah, right.
Or lose, lose opportunity because people are not gonna want to fight for it because. There's other areas, like you said, Isabella is huge right now. They're gonna market that for them, you know, so.
They're putting them in left and right, down Isabella, Grasset. I'll call them.
So do we want to uh table the entire change? And then uh, or just the solar part of it, or do we want just?
I would say solar and wind, but can, it's one ordinance, can we table just sections of it?
Yeah, well, I suppose we could, but we don't need to. I don't think uh.
Do you have any big turkey farmer?
Yeah, okay. So, uh, do we close our public hearing and then?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there any more discussion on anything? Of anybody on this entirety of it? No, okay.
No, you didn't. I'm glad you're here. Thank you, John.
Cause, you know, I don't.
I'm always glad you're in my presence.
I don't really know.
It's a good day.
A lot of what's to learn, so.
What I know, I know from when my aunt and uncle had solar panels. Phil and Ruth had solar panels on the side of their house, and apparently that saved their world for heat. And we weren't allowed to touch them. So I appreciate your input on that. So I made the motion to Lynn Second to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
I, I.